This year marks the second year we've paired with the United States Military in support and recognition of their hard work and sacrifice. This event will be promoted by US 99 and AM 560 The Answer. So please pass the word along to your friends and relatives. We encourage the night of that you bring out your cellphones, put those on, post these images to your social media sites because this program does mean a lot to the people who serve these communities and also to the communities that you guys live in. So come on out, August 6th, 2019 at 6:00 PM at Memorial Park. We look forward to you being there and hope we have a good time together. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you Sergeant. And on behalf of the Board, we encourage every, all our residents to come out to this event. Sergeant Fellers and his staff in the Police Department put on a great show. Actually, it's a production. I think Sergeant Fellers was an emcee at one time on, in Vanuatu, I guess, right? There you go. But thank you for all the work that you guys have put into this Sergeant and your staff. Next up, we have public participation. Now, we're all a community, we're LaGrange Park, right? We respect each other, we love each other, we know what each other is about, we have difference of opinions, which is great. That's why you're here, talking to the Board. But let's do it respectfully. If anyone would care to address a subject on the agenda not regarding chickens, please step up to the mic and talk to the, speak to the Board if you'd like. Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Nicholson, I'm at 842 Osgood Road in LaGrange Park. I want to talk about Lake Shore Recycling. I got my first bill for Lake Shore Recycling and it was fine. This last week, I got another bill for Lake Shore Recycling and they had tagged on administrative fee to like $2. Now, they went to all of the trouble to post all of their prices for the next four years, whatever the term of their contract is. Nothing was said about an administrative fee. So I called and they told me if you paid by mail. Well, I went through all of their paperwork and there was nothing in there about paying by mail or paying by bill to get a chargeback for it. At least, I figured this out with them, I think they should straighten it out. It's just wrong, I am not going to pay it. They did the same thing with them and asked me, did I get the grocery service? And I said, no, but you could get it at like $40. So I ordered it and, "Do you want to pay it by mail or do you want to put it on your credit card?" I said, no, just submit, no, I'll send it back to you. Did the same thing with my neighbor down the street, they did he did his on their credit card, by my mail. And they're not changing, we have charged them the administrative fee for that. And to me, if they were going to do it, they should have put it in their earnings that they put out. And to me, already made your, made your decision what you're going to do and are going to print the prices for the next four years, I don't think anybody should have to pay this administrative fee because they were smart enough to put that in their original plans. I don't have enough trash to have a pickup every week. Every three weeks is what I put right out. So they don't even stop by house every week. I, I used to, I used to sell meat, I sold grocery store chains in the United States, some of the largest sausage makers in the United States, some of the largest.
Time.
And if I ever sold them a product, set a price for them and sent a bill with the administrative, you know, you know what they tell me to do. And that's what I think the village should do. Hey, you work it out with them, straighten it out with them.
Thank you, John. Okay. We've been through this a couple of times, a lot of you have come up and spoken before the Board before. I, I'm not discouraging you from doing that, but let's try, there's a lot of people here, let's not try to be repetitive. And we're going to give you a minute and a half because of all the people that are here that may possibly want to speak, so try and be concise. So whoever would like to come up, please give us your name and address and go for it.
Evening, my name is James Drury, I live at 343 North Edgewood. Tonight, I'm going to give the Board an update from the Centers for Disease Control. If you remember last month, they gave the Committee an alert issued by the CDC concerning a multi-state outbreak of salmonella that was linked to backyard chickens. Tonight, I have an update from, report from the CDC that was issued last Friday, July 19. The new report details salmonella outbreaks linked to backyard poultry. Most important thing that I've seen in this is that 156 illnesses occurred among children younger than five years. Two deaths have been reported in Texas and Ohio. 122 people have been hospitalized. The laboratory from the CDC, evidence indicate that the contact with the backyard poultry such as chicks and ducklings from multiple hatcheries are the likely source of this salmonella outbreak. It is now in 48 states. Now, we talked about backyard chickens carrying disease to people, we know about that. Ladies and gentlemen, you are stewards of our village. I know that you would not allow an industry to come into our village that could compromise the health and safety of our village. But you're being asked to do that, and I'm going to ask you to vote no on the chicken issue. I think I took care of it in a minute and a third.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Egan, 324 North Edgewood. My understanding is that a chicken's a farm animal, we don't live on a farm, I don't think it's a domestic animal, I don't think it belongs in our village. Secondly, I've heard that real estate values could be impacted if you're trying to sell your house and there's a chicken coop next door, that could be a negative impact too. On the lighter side, I see that one of the agenda items tonight is for improving one of the street sweepers. Hopefully, this won't cause more of that, but that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Chris Rogers, 338 North Dover, 30-plus years as a LaGrange Park resident. After the survey results, I am mystified as to why the trustees would not send this issue to a referendum. I truly just don't get it, it's my sole comment.
How about if I gave you two minutes? Okay, that's it? You still only get a minute and a half though.
Nancy Rosano at 1401 North LaGrange Road. The first gentleman was right that there were some salmonella problems with chicks coming in from certain hatcheries. And I think it would be, who, anyone who does want to get chickens, to thoroughly research whether or not the hatchery you're getting your chicks from is one of those salmonella hatcheries. I know that I want chickens and I will make sure that I get them only from a responsible breeder or possibly hatch them myself. Probably actually, because who doesn't want the little cute babies? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
My name is Pam Paduner, I live in LGP in Harding Woods on Kensington, 317. We've lived here for eight years now and hope for 50 more. We're investing quite a lot of time here if you're keeping scores. The cities all around us here have for years now kept these birds and there's been no history of tragedy, calamity, catastrophe from poultry because chickens aren't a threat. Some residents are fearful hearing this misinformation, but you can quell their fears with policy and regulation. We'll say no thanks to the roosters and the coops must all have charm and let's cap the size of flocks because we don't want a poultry farm. You can set the distance from lot lines and anti-predatory systems and no slaughtering because really, no one wants to eat their chickens, gross that they're our pets. So I'm asking the trustees here to proclaim it with conviction that in the LGP, we're not too chicken to have chickens. Thank you.
Erin Paduner, also 317 Kensington. So posted beneath the agenda was this great memo that Julia and Emily put together. They really did their due diligence and they really looked at what other communities were doing around us. And it's, it's okay, guys. I'm going to quote here, they looked at Brookfield, North Riverside, Riverside, Western Springs, and they said, each of the four communities confirms that they not had any founded complaints regarding the keeping of backyard chickens. Another quote for you, they talked to Realtors, right? I understand the concern. The Realtors said they didn't think buyers would necessarily be deterred from purchasing a home based on chickens. They looked at the Cook County Department of Animal Control. They said as long as coops and runs are properly constructed, they should not attract predators and other wildlife. They talked to the Illinois Department of Resources and they talked to, they got information from the CDC and they said that diseases can be prevented by properly handling and caring for poultry. So, in a not as poetic way as my wife said, it's, it's okay, guys. People around us are doing it, it's all right. They're not, they're not changing, they're not reneging on these rules. They had a pilot, it turned out well, and they continued it. So that's what I'm asking for, is a pilot for backyard chickens.
If anybody else wants to speak, we can start lining up so that we don't have to wait for you guys to get up if you do. There you go. Thank you, ma'am.
Heck Bowens, 1662 Finsbury. I'm sure all these people are well-intentioned and I appreciate their, their want, eat whatever. My question is this, I've lived here my, basically my whole life. This is a residential community. I'll tell you this, a tiny little story. My son's hockey coach lived in Sugar Grove and he had a pet pig. They're invited to his house all, at the end of the season, all the time. That pig went in and out, then it would flap her door. So where do we go from here? We're not a farming community. A dog and a cat are not considered, I don't think, farming animals. When we step into chickens, pigs, or let's say some three little girls want a pony, what are we going to say to them? Who's going to inspect these? I get what the young lady said here about if they buy them from the right place, is everybody going to be conscientious of that and buy them from the right place so they don't have this disease and that? I doubt it. And what additional burden are we going to put on our village inspectors, excuse me, our police department? If the neighbor calls complaining, what are we going to do? Send out inspector? What's the inspector going to do? What's he going to do? I know some situations, you guys know about it, not too far from me right now, that we basically can't do anything about a bad situation. So I think we're increasing the burden on them. We're allowing ourselves to become a...
Time.
So, thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kira Conley, I have been a, I live at 721 North Brenner. I have been a resident of LaGrange Park for all 12 years I've been alive. And what I am going to say is I am pro-chicken and the reason of this is the fact that I, that I have relatives who live in a farming community in Wisconsin. And they say there is nothing like fresh eggs. My relatives personally do not keep chickens, but they have neighbors who do. And if, and I can say this, there is nothing like fresh eggs. If you forget to buy eggs at the grocery store, your neighbor would be happy to give you some if they had extra. So I am pro-chicken. Yay.
Hi there, my name is Lola Paduner, I live at 317 North Kensington. I am, along with all of my family members, pro-chicken because I think that we should allow chickens for the same reason that we allow dogs. Because they're pets and they're very similar, not, not because they're the same species, hot crap, I really should have brought it to you. Oh, yeah. Chickens are funny and they, they have personalities, they're very similar to dogs, and there's the concern about LaGrange Park becoming a farm. But, um, most of the, we're not exactly going to be using chickens for farming. Sure, we get fresh eggs, but chickens live about eight years and they stop laying eggs at about three or four years. So most of the time, they will just be pets.
My name is Dawn McCormick, I live at 338 North Edgewood Avenue. And initially, when I saw the survey that went out about chickens, all I could think of was, oh, please God, no. We have enough problems on Edgewood with coyotes and raccoons and all of the wildlife. And I wish I could remember her name, but last month, she spoke at this meeting about how hard enough kind of living in harmony with the animals that belong here. I mean, they were here first, so we feel a commitment to get along with the wildlife. And I'm, I'm sorry, this seems like a very wholesome, benign kind of thing, but there's no way it is not going to attract wildlife into our community. And at first, I thought, well, maybe that's Edgewood because we're so close to the forest preserve. But I drive around town all parts of the day and the night and I see coyotes, raccoons, possum, all over this village. So I don't think it's just the streets bordering the forest preserve that have a concern. I think there's absolutely no way these things are not, these chickens are not going to attract wildlife. My, the other thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Drury's done a lot of homework, he's giving us feedback about what has happened in some of the communities that have allowed chickens. And I don't think we can ignore that. He's not talking about big factory farm poultry confinement systems, he's talking about the risk of backyard chickens. And the gentleman who talked about monitoring this, I think it's ridiculous that we would take this on. So I ask you to vote no, please.
Thank you, Dawn.
Hi, Mark Washburn, 1408 Robin Hood, resident for 21 years. We do live pretty close to the forest preserve on Robin Hood, about three blocks away, so there are a lot, definitely a lot of animals. I can watch for that. See coyotes walking down the middle of the street like they're, like they own the neighborhood. It's ridiculous. But I really appreciate all the energy and I'm sure all the pro-chicken people are great people, okay? My problem is, my, my own personal problem is that everybody in my family is, first of all, terrible allergies. And we do have, one of the, one of my daughters has a compromised immune system. It's a proven fact that the chickens do cause meningitis, that, that bird droppings cause meningitis, especially two, two particular types, cryptococcus and histoplasmic meningitis. Besides histoplasmosis, and it's from the droppings and the dirt. Even once the chickens are lunged for years, if that dirt is disturbed, if you walk on it, it blows in the air and you breathe it, if you have any kind of compromised immune system, it could cause major, major problems. So I don't think it's just the fact that, hey, we're getting the chickens from the right spot, hey, we're doing the right things. You don't know what's already in the dirt and what the chickens are going to dig up besides what they may contract while you own them. And the fact that it's going to be there for a long time. I think in the future at some point, if this ever does become a problem, I mean, I, I can see Realtors being like, asking the question, hey, you know, on a standard inspection, is this, did you ever own chickens? Has this house ever had chickens behind it? Will, will, will it affect your resale value? I believe it definitely will, but also as far as even doing a trial with chickens, let's, let's make sure everybody around, that lives around where these chickens may be, if you guys vote that it'd be this way, that all the neighbors are okay with it before you just say, okay, hey, you applied to get them, you know, you have to check with your neighbors, go, you know, five, 500 feet anyway, make sure nobody objects, fine. You know, if you want chickens, go ahead. We don't have big enough yards to be saying, hey, we moved, it's not going to be my yard. So that's why I have...
Thank you, Mark.
I do have a couple of sheets here. I'll try to step, you know.
Thank you, Mark.
I just wanted to expand a little bit in the starters with the family animals. LaGrange Park, as I said at the last time, we are all surrounded. LaGrange Park, if you look at the territory, it's all surrounded by forest preserves. There's no area that is not affected. So they're always going to be the coyotes, the foxes, the skunks, the possums, the raccoons, all of them in the area. I've dealt with them, I have some other neighbors who have dealt with them where they've gotten under our sheds or wherever else and we've had the exterminator companies come out and, what they've had to do to fix it up. So they're all around us. My real concern is with the hawks. They're in the area, they're, I, when we first moved in and I've been a resident, our current house, 33 years, in total 40 years within LaGrange Park, there weren't a lot of hawks. We have noticed over the years, more and more. Have you ever heard the screaming of a hawk who has caught some type of animal? And the screaming and the crying and everything, you think somebody's outside killing somebody. And this is only going to be bringing more hawks in. They see food, that's all there is their concern. Prey, food, here I am. And you're going to get more of it. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Hello, Ian Hanson, 824 North Kensington. I, I like hearing all the, both sides of this. To me, it seems like the, the fees would pay for the inspections. I think we're talking about maybe, maybe a max of 10, Riverside has 10. It sounds like, you know, if I'm talking to people, that we're maybe looking at three in the whole village. Doesn't seem like it would be an outbreak of issues, especially to try it out. You know, the, the, the animals, yes, they're, they're pets, the chickens, they're, they're in a coop locked up, hopefully better than our garbage. That's not going to be predators, I wouldn't think, if it's, if it's built properly. Facts there that seems like it negates a lot of the issues that were brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Hi, Tracy Connolly, 721 North Brenner. I had written the village and I have family that lives in Lodi, Wisconsin. My daughter was up here, spoke to it earlier. It's basically a rural town for the most part. There's a small, kind of suburban setting in the middle. And there, as she stated, there are some people that keep backyard chickens. I can see that people are concerned and you have every right to be if they're not kept well and monitored and safely kept and that they are contained. People that come in contact with the chickens need to be diligent about washing their hands and making sure that anyone that comes in contact with the chickens are aware that they need to be diligent as well as to washing their hands, not wearing shoes in the house. These things, and that's what we've seen of my cousin's property in Wisconsin, she's in the little town section of it. They have not had any problems with any diseases or neighbors or anything like that. They've had nothing but happiness, actually, as my daughter stated, running out of eggs, being able to go to the neighbor's house. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
My name is Anne Roth and I live at 714 North Spring. I currently work at a, an urban farm in Countryside, it's the, it's the Double J Riding Club and they have an urban farm. I teach junior farmers, junior farmer classes. I work with chickens literally every day. I work with outside chickens in a, in a very nice coop as we're talking about, and I work with inside chickens that are like sarahma chickens, much smaller. The reason I'm mentioning that is, we have them interact with the children every single day, they're, and we're with them every single day. The coop is, the coops are, to your, many of your points, the coops are very, it's professional and it is well-made, no predation. There's been no predators in six years of owning the chickens. So it doesn't, if you have proper facilities, you will not have the issues of predation. Again, trial is something very different than, for sure, this is the way the world is going to work. Quick note, as your research proved, three families in Brookfield, North Riverside has no one that has, has chosen to do this, Riverside has four families and Western Springs has 10 to 15. We are not talking about 400,000 chickens. We are talking about a very small amount, few families, and we are talking about a, a nice trial, an opportunity to see if it works. If it does not, we should not prove it.
Time.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else care to address the Board? Okay. Moving on, consent agenda, Megan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes. One, Village Board meeting, June 25th, 2019. Two, work session meeting, July 9th, 2019. B, action, noise restrictions, exception, Nazareth Academy Night Football Games. Motion to grant an exception to the nuisance regulations contained in Section 93 dot O4 dot C dot five as amended of the Village Municipal Code for the purpose of allowing Nazareth Academy to operate their sound system until 10:00 PM on September 6th, September 13th, September 27th, October 4th, and for a potential playoff game on November 1st, 2019. C, action, purchase of a 2020 police interceptor. Motion to authorize staff to purchase a new 2020 Ford Interceptor Utility Police Patrol Package for a car... Package for a cost of $32,947 from Curry Motors Fleet in Frankfurt, Illinois. Through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 152, and increase the overall budgeted amount to not exceed $40,000 to cover the equipment and upfitting. D, action, street sweeper repairs, FY 1920. Motion, one, to accept the service estimate from Standard Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $15,000, and two, to authorize the village manager to execute the contract documents. E, action, 2019-2020 MFT General Maintenance Resolution. Motion to adopt a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the expenditure of $306,000 in MFT funds. F, action, road stripping program, FY 1920. Motion, one, to accept the proposal from Superior Road Stripping Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $19,500, and two, to authorize the village manager to execute the contract document. G, action, authorize signers for village financial accounts. Motion, one, to approve an ordinance designating village depository and financial institutions and authorize signers, and two, to approve an account resolution certificate for treasury management services for Fifth Third Bank. H, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. I, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and August 27, 2019, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on August 27, 2019.
Thank you, Megan. A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. Amanda call the roll.
Trustee Mezick?
Megan call the roll.
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Next up is village managers' report. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just one small item to report this evening. Evaluation of the three financial software vendors that were selected for demonstration is wrapping up, and finance director Larry Knoller is leading this effort. Thanks to Larry and all the hard work and working with the evaluation team. We expect to bring a recommendation to the village board for next month, and that completes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Moving on, administration committee, trustee Seidel.
There are three items on tonight's administration report. National Night Out, the LaGrange Park Police Department, Crime Prevention Unit, and Fire Department will host the 2019 National Night Out evening on Tuesday, August 6, at Memorial Park. Festivities will begin at 6:00 p.m. and include child safety seat inspections, food, inflatables, entertainment, and a free raffle. Please join us for this free, family-friendly event. Village vehicle sticker deadline. Every resident must purchase a LaGrange Park vehicle sticker for each vehicle they own and use in the village, including leased or company-owned vehicles registered elsewhere. New residents and residents who buy a new vehicle have 60 days to purchase a sticker. Vehicle stickers must be purchased by July 31 each year. Vehicle stickers are $35 per year or $15 per year for seniors who are 65 years of age prior to July 1. Vehicle stickers may be purchased online, a convenience fee applies. For more information on pricing or to obtain a mail-in application, please call Village Hall. Construction updates. Summer is construction season, and there is a lot of work going on in and around the village. For information on the status of road construction and water and sewer-related construction, please check the village's website or sign up for the village's weekly electronic newsletter Eve briefs. Construction updates are provided weekly and include information about village, state, and neighboring community projects. My next item is exchange server replacement. The general background, the village's exchange server has exceeded its useful life, and in recent months, the village has experienced some performance issues with the server. The exchange server hosts the village's email system, and when it fails, village staff has no ability to send or receive email. As such, it is a critical piece of equipment that is essential to daily village operations. The village's IT consultant, All Information Services, has secured competitive pricing for a new Dell Exchange Server from CDWG, which has an existing pricing agreement with the state of Illinois. Due to changes in technology, the new exchange server will not work with older versions of Microsoft Office older than 2013. AIS estimates the village currently has 11 computers operating with old license, which will require updating. Estimated project costs are detailed below. Server hardware and associated mounting equipment, $7,250. Microsoft software and licensing, $8,600. VW Ware software, $600. Annual service fee for VW M Ware, $100. Estimated labor, setup, configure, migrate, $5,100. Microsoft Office license, $3,000. Estimated labor, Microsoft Office install is $2,000, and contingency is $2,700, with a total of $29,350. The total anticipated project cost is $29,350, which includes a 10% contingency for unforeseen costs. The village was budgeted $36,570 in the capital project, water and sewer funds for the exchange server replacement project. Due to the age of the current exchange server and recent performance issues with the server, staff has ordered the new exchange. The new server is anticipated to arrive in four to six weeks. The village will not pay for the server until install is complete. This action is for discussion and action. Motion to approve the purchase and installation of an exchange server from All Information Services in an amount not to exceed $29,350.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Seidel.
It has to get done for village business, so I am in favor.
Any other comments from the board? Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add that I think it has outlived its normal life expectancy, so this timeframe is very typical of having to replace devices of this magnitude.
Any other comments? See now, Amanda, Megan call the roll.
Trustee Mezick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Continue on, trustee Seidel.
The next item is keeping of chickens, additional research. General background, at the June 11, 2018, village board work session, the village board reviewed the results of the backyard chicken survey and requested staff conduct additional research related to the regulation, application, and permitting process of backyard chickens in other communities. The village board also requested staff obtain feedback regarding potential concerns related to chicken keeping from regulating authorities and feedback from local realtors as it is perceived impact on property values. Community regulations. The table below summarizes the additional research conducted by staff related to regulations in Brookfield, North Riverside, Riverside, and Western Springs. Each community's ordinance, regulations, and application materials where are attached to this memo. Each of the four communities confirm they have not had any founded complaints regarding the keeping of backyard chickens. Although both Riverside and Western Springs noted that they believe at least one household in each of their communities has lost a chicken to predators. Of the four communities above the village, Riverside has the most comprehensive regulation, application, and permitting process. Riverside first allowed chickens as a one-year pilot program, which began in January 2017. Upon the close of the pilot program, the village reviewed the impacts and decided to retain the regulations. The village's regulations restrict the coop location and size, require an annual permit and inspection, include provisions for enforcement and permit suspension, and restrict the total number of licenses in the village to no more than 15 annually. The community development director of the village of Riverside, who oversees the process, indicated that it works well for the community, and they currently have no plans to alter how the process is administered. Realtor feedback. Staff spoke with four local realtors who specialize in the sale of single-family homes in LaGrange Park and the surrounding area. None of them had personal experience showing and/or selling homes adjacent to homes with backyard chickens. All of the realtors indicated that if the coops were located a reasonable distance from neighboring properties, they did not think buyers would necessarily be deterred from purchasing the home. The realtors also noted that since each buyer has individual preferences, it is difficult to gauge the true impact of backyard chickens on property values. Regulatory feedback. Staff contacted the Cook County Department of Animal Control. According to the feedback provided by the county, if people do not properly care for chicken feed and feces, there is an opportunity to attract rats and field mice, but no more so than existing opportunities related to food being left outside, bird feeders, garbage, compost piles, et cetera. The department representative noted that as long as coops and runs are properly constructed, they should not be an attraction to predators and other wildlife. Again, no more so than existing opportunities related to food being left outside. Staff also contacted the Illinois Department of Resources, who suggested we contact Cook County and the Center for Disease Control. Staff reviewed the information related to backyard chickens provided by the CDC on their website. The CDC lists five diseases that people share with poultry, including bird flu, campylobacteriosis, e. coli, salmonella, and the West Nile virus. According to the CDC, these diseases can be prevented by proper handling and caring for poultry. The above diseases are not life-threatening to most healthy people between the age of 5 and 65, and symptoms of the diseases may be mistaken for other forms of illness. Thus, the CDC states that the true number of people who become ill after contact with live poultry is difficult to determine. Additional information, along with resources for how to prevent disease in both people and poultry when housing backyard chickens, can be found on the CDC website. Resident feedback. In May, the village conducted an online survey regarding the keeping of backyard chickens. Over 1,000 people responded to the survey. Of the responses received, 54% were opposed to allowing backyard chickens. The village has also received input from residents at multiple public meetings, including the meetings held June 11, June 25, and July 29. Staff has received written feedback, which is attached to this memo. Although some of the feedback at the public meetings in writing has been supportive of allowing backyard chickens, the majority of the feedback has been in opposition, citing concerns related to aesthetic, odor, noise, pest, predator, disease, and a detrimental impact to home values. Motion, action requested. If the village board desires to maintain the existing ordinance prohibiting chickens, no further action is necessary. If the village board desires to modify our current ordinance, the board should direct staff to proceed with developing proposed regulations related to the keeping of backyard chickens for consideration at a later date. Staff recommends using the village of Riverside's regulation as a model through the comprehensive nation of the nature of the regulations and the transferability to our community.
Discussion. Trustee Seidel.
I think staff has done a great job with addressing concerns from the residents and put a lot of time into research of other communities. I feel like there has not been as many concerns that have been addressed. I think it would only be a few residents who would be looking to have backyard chickens, and those residents who would follow the rules would be responsible, and therefore I am in favor.
Trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is probably one of the pieces that we spent, or I've spent the most time researching and talking to people in the village. When you first came to the meeting and talked about chickens, I went home thinking, wow, this is pretty, this is pretty cool. But then upon other feedback, I guess I'll first start with predators. I live on Scottdale, which is surrounded by forest preserve. In the last four weeks, I've had two raccoons, I'm sorry, multiple raccoons, two coyotes, one on my deck. I have a little white fluffy dog, and that concerns us. I've also had two red fox. I understand they're pretty docile, and they are, they are beautiful, beautiful animals. I haven't seen a rabbit in my yard in five years. We have hawks. And it was interesting, when you, when you look at hawks, I used to play golf, and in the morning, the hawks would be going after the squirrels in the, in the trees. My concern is much is not the predators going after the, you know, going after the chicken coops, but the potential of having more predators. And kids, you guys are great. We have a little dog. Like I said, the first time this, this came to me, I'm thinking, wow, this would be pretty cool. The chickens will be safe. You guys will do a great job. But I'm worried about other people's, people's pets. Couple other people I talked to, I did talk to some realtors also. The realtors' concerns weren't necessarily property value, but they would have a concern that some of the people that they're showing homes to, seeing a chicken coop would be, you know, maybe not ready to, you know, maybe not ready to buy. I don't think they would say, okay, I want to buy this house, but for $10,000, $10,000 less. Had a real good friend that grew up in Southern California, and they did not allow chickens. She moved to be with her spouse to Dyer, Indiana, and, which is rural, it's right over northwest Indiana, right over the border, and she moved back to California. You grow up in Southern California, you don't want cold weather. They live in Ontario, they have a beautiful home that they just purchased, very fortunate for about a half a million dollars. And I called her and asked her, what do you think? She said, when I lived in Dyer, I think it would have been fine. It's a more of a rural community, as all the other parts of Indiana. She grew up in Moreno Valley, and where she lives now, she says, no, I don't, I don't think it's, it's proper. Honestly, this is one, especially when I look at, at the good folks over there, that I want to say yes on. Unfortunately, with a lot of people that I talked to and their concerns, I do have to say no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Cussera. Trustee Mezick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would have to echo some of what trustee Cussera said. As with some issues we've had here, this is about as much time we've put into researching things. Staff, excellent job of getting all the information in front of us, and I wanted to do the due diligence, and that's why I asked for more information back in June. Some of my concerns, too, are, along with some of the predator issues, are staff time, how much staff time would have to be consumed to monitor this kind of, you know, the permits and all that. I echo what the resale is, is a mixed bag, because I talked to some realtors myself, too. It's not even, they don't have any hard data. But many feel that, that it may restrict the customers that they're talking to. I have concerns about lot size, and also, and as again, with the people that were here, I feel the same way. I'm sure you would be great, good taking care of your chickens, but I've always said something, when I do, any decision we make up here, I always try to look out even 10, 20 years, because there's always unintended consequences. And when you change a longstanding code, and you don't know what's going, we don't know who's going to be doing it in the future either. You know, how many, how many more families, how well they're going to take care of them. So you said, in that interest, I just, I really can't support all that. And also, when it's really hard like this, because everybody made great points, there You know, how many, how many more families, how well they're going to take care of them. So, you said, in that interest, I just, I really can't support all that, and also, when it's really hard like this, because everybody made great points, there, there was good research on both sides, then I have to fall back on the, on the numbers. And, and there seems to be far more people came out against it in, in the numbers, probably two to one, as far as some of the, both what I saw and who I talked to, not counting the survey. And so I, I kind of have to side with the majority of the residents on this one.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo many of the thoughts that Trustee Casera and Trustee Messick have. We keep hearing, we don't live on a farm. However, when I walk out my front door, I feel like I do live on a farm. I've had two doves build a nest right by my front door in the last couple of months. I've had my neighbor directly across the street, in the last six weeks, their dog has been skunked three times. They've had large raccoons in their garage. I'm constantly chasing field mice out of my garage. Staff has done a great job. There's, there's a lot of time invested in this from when this first started last year. I think they had burden to, are already overwhelmed, the building departments were spread thin as it is now. Last year, I did see a hawk on the twelve-hundred block of Community swipe down and pick up a rabbit. It did not have a good outcome. I see in the notes provided to us, Riverside and Western Springs say that predators have lost at least one chicken, and that would be my concern, and also to the property values and to the neighbors who might live behind some of the people who I'm sure would take care of their chickens, the consequences toward them. So for that reason, Mr. President, I cannot support this one vote no.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Trustee Launer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back when we first started talking about this, many of you, some of you at least were here, and you may recall that I was very skeptical from the onset, concerns about lot sizes, predators, the, the, the health risks, and a lot of that was based upon my personal experience in, in my youth and growing up in a rural environment in Southern Illinois and being in proximity to chickens, and, and personally knowing two individuals that in fact did contract histoplasmosis, and let me tell you, that both of them darn near died. It is very serious, as Mr. Drury shared with us. But in, in trying to step back and look at this holistically, the impact on the residents, the impact on the staff, the impact on property values, and all things considered, and with the feedback that we received from the community, which we, I know, will echo everyone's perspective that we heartily appreciate you to, to come, come forth with your perspectives, and the information has been extremely helpful in going through this. I know the outcome of this won't necessarily be favorable to everyone, but I hope to assure you that we've all given this thorough consideration to decide what's the best thing for the overall community. I also have had conversations with, with reliters regarding this, and while the three or four of them that I did speak with couldn't point to statistics that represented impact on, on the real estate value or on the property value, but they all iterated that it certainly would have an impact on potential market, you know, as they would talk to, to prospective buyers, that, that would likely reduce the, the number that would be interested in, in that. Also considering our staff, our, our staff time, which has already been an extremely extensive amount of, of time that they've extended on this, which we all appreciate, of course, but as I look at the whole, at the whole situation, I applaud especially the younger families that have the desire to learn more and become involved in this, but as I look at this for the community, I've, I've come to the conclusion that there are far more risks for far more residents of this community than there are potential benefits for a few. So I, in light of that, would, would not support a, a change to the ordinance as well.
Thank you, Trustee Launer. Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate, again, as everyone else has echoed, the staff time that's in center on this, because it has been extensive, because everyone's been trying to figure out what's best for the community, and as a trustee, I'm responsible for looking at the community as a whole, even if I don't agree with what I'm going to vote on. And I personally think if you want chickens, you should be able to have chickens, but as a village, I don't think it's the right decision for us. I've received so much negative feedback that it's just hard for me to vote the way that I want to vote, and that's, that's really where I am with this. And I also wanted to mention, this is slightly off-topic, but because we have a full boardroom, and I think this is just as important to our community, I share everyone's position for the health of La Grange Park, but I'd like to bring up a health issue while I have all of your attention. There's a silent killer that we should be concerned about, namely ethylene oxide, which is ETO, soon to be released again in our community eleven miles from our homes in La Grange Park. For those of you that are unaware, ETO is an invisible gas with no odor or taste, and it is a, a cancer-causing gas, uses sterilized medical equipment that can penetrate cardboard, plastic, and paper. This chemical can alter DNA, and errors in DNA cause cancer, fertility issues, and allergies as some of us suffer from. This toxic chemical has a half-life of seven months in the air. When released steadily, you're exposed for twenty-four hours a day, increasing all of our risks. I wanted to mention this because I think this is just as important as the, the chicken issue, and in tomorrow in DuPage County, the courthouse in Wheaton, there is a hearing at one-thirty PM, and numbers are critical on this, if we're going to stop this from happening in our community and causing cancer for our children, ourselves, and our grandchildren. So I want everyone to be aware of this, and I hope that you are as passionate about this issue as you are about the chickens, because it does affect everyone in this room, whether we live here, work here, or drive through La Grange Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Okay, it's democracy at work here. I appreciate and applaud both sides, as some of our trustees have said. Some are not going to be pleased with the results, some are going to be happy with the results. The thing is, is that we went through the process, this board, went through the process, listened to people, took the survey, which was an instrument, not itself a decision, and that's why we're here tonight. So I want to applaud this board for the work that they did and taking the time and patience, listening to the criticism and the critiques of, of this topic, and, and making a decision up here, which is not easy for us, but that's why we're up here. So we'll move forward, this will not be carried to the staff. So thank you all for, for your input, and we'll move on. Okay, Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President. One hundred and three building permits were issued in June compared to one hundred and four last June. Three hundred and eighty-one permits have been issued year-to-date compared to five hundred and four during the same period in 2018. Estimated construction costs and permit fees collected are substantially less in June of twenty-eight, less than June of 2018. One hundred and twenty inspections were conducted this June compared to one hundred and thirty-six last June, four were not approved. The CSJ building is nearly complete, with mostly only punch-list items remaining. Various final inspections were completed, including recent final inspections of the two photovoltaic systems, the three-story building roof and the canopy system over the west parking area. They hope to take occupancy in August. Final inspections for the Montessori Children's School located in nineteen oh five East Thirty-first Street were completed. The owner still needs to obtain health and DCFS approvals prior to opening for business. The DCFS process may take up to two months. The facade of the Park Home Thirty-first Street Shopping Center was completed, and we are currently awaiting seminars for plans for Eno's, the reseminal for Ozadie's, and the work to install the new water service and fire sprinkler system. Much of the major work on the outdoor patio matone is nearing completion. There's still items to complete on the property, including a ramp and landscaping. This is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Engineering Capital Projects, Trustee Casera.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have five different pieces to work on, or discuss. The contractor for the 2019 street paving program, Jay Narguli Concrete, has made significant progress on the project. They have removed and replaced the identified portions of curb on the seven and eight-hundred blocks of Wyola, seven-hundred block of Spring, Jackson from La Grange Road, Barn, Barnesdale Road, and Brewster from Spring Avenue to La Grange Road. Driveways disturbed by curb removal have been replaced, and all public sidewalks at the intersections have been brought into full compliance with current ADA requirements. Cold million of these streets in anticipation of resurfacing during July has also occurred. The initial group of streets included the areas adjacent to schools in order to minimize the disruption to students and residents. The work focus will shift to the second group of streets in July. All construction activities on the project, including landscape restoration, are expected to be completed by late fall. Second item, work on the Raymond Avenue Water Main Replacement Project has begun. The contractor, Suburban General Construction, started installing water main at Thirty-first and is looking north. Major construction activities in front of St. Louis de Merelac and Burke Park Schools will be completed by mid-August in order to reduce the inconvenience and disruption to the area from our construction. The balance of the work will be completed by mid-September, with landscape restoration occurring when the weather conditions moderate. The final documentation for the Harding Avenue Resurfing Project has been completed. This information will be submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, for their review and processing. The Sherwood Road Project is awaiting IDOT action on documentation and material inspection reports. Final item, Unique Plumbing Company has completed most of the work on the 2019 sewer repair project. The remaining repairs will be completed in July. The repairs are performed in order to keep the system functioning at maximum efficiency and is coordinated with the 2019 street pave, street paving program. That completes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Launer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have updates from the Police and Fire Department area, as well as one item for discussion and action. From the Police Department area, the total number of crimes this year are slightly higher than last year at this time, with one hundred and fifty-two reported this year compared to one hundred and thirty-seven last year. Traffic enforcement is at two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine total tickets issued through June of 2019. Overall, police activity is slightly lower to last year, with four thousand two hundred and forty-five total incidents reported through June of 2019, as compared to four thousand seven hundred and six total incidents through June of 2018. Affected June seventh, 2019, Sergeant Fran Morocco was appointed the Operations Commander of the Police Department. Commander Morocco started his career in La Grange Park in January of 2006, and is a valuable asset to this agency and the village. Congratulations to Commander Morocco. Mark your calendars, and do not miss out on the upcoming Police Department special events, as we heard the presentation from Sergeant Matt Fellers tonight, next Tuesday, August sixth, at six PM at Memorial Park, regarding the National Night Out. And for more information on that, contact Sergeant Matt Fellers directly at seven zero eight three five two seventy-seven eleven, extension two sixty-four. And also, please plan to attend a coffee with the chief and staff on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, from seven until eight PM at Plymouth Place, and please note that that's a change in date from previously reported of August twenty-first, so the new date is August twenty-eighth. And as always, a friendly reminder about securing one's personal property at all times. Please lock your vehicles and residences, especially during overnight hours. If you are going on vacation, please come into the La Grange Park Police Department between the hours of eight-thirty AM through five PM, Monday through Friday, and fill out a vacation watch card. When you return home, please come into the Police Department to sign the vacation watch card, and let us know that you are home. You also see notated on there each of the visits that the officers have made to your home to check things out. And from the Fire Department, EMS incidents this month were at one forty-six. There have been seven hundred and thirty-eight incidents year-to-date compared to eight hundred and five year-to-date in 2018. Fire and rescue incidents this month totaled forty-one, and there have been two hundred and eighty-eight year-to-date incidents compared to two hundred and thirty year-to-date in 2018. Our personnel participated in the pet parade in La Grange with our ladder truck. During such time, we also staffed a crew in our station to assist La Grange with fire and EMS coverage during the parade. Personnel helped to support the Wounded Warrior Soldier Ride, displaying our large American flag over the nineteen-hundred block of East Thirty-first Street with our ladder truck. Fire and life safety occupancy inspections were conducted for the new building at Congregation of St. Joseph, including acceptance testing of the fire systems and the elevator. In addition, final fire alarm acceptance testing and final fire sprinkler testing was conducted at nineteen oh five East Thirty-first Street, the new Montessori Children's Community designed for infants, infants to three years old. Three personnel attended the annual Fire College Event at University of Illinois in Champaign. Probationary Officers Benjamin Latham, Matthew Carey, and Patrick Reichel graduated from the Basic Operations Fire Academy. Congratulations to all of them. They all did very well, and, and we do congratulate them. Personnel participated in cancer prevention training as part of the Safety Stand Down Week. Several personnel participated in live fire training sessions hosted by Mavis Division Ten, Training Officers at the Romeoville Fire Academy Training Center. And two noteworthy events that we were involved in, on June first, at four fifty-seven on a Saturday afternoon, made a response to the four-hundred block of Homestead Avenue, where a car struck two others, and then crashed into a large brick garage. Personnel cleared debris and shored up the damaged structure in order to safely assist with removing two occupants. On the sixth of June, on a Thursday afternoon, response to Matones was made and extinguished a fire in the roof after staff noticed smoke in the attic and dining room. Firefighters worked hard to completely extinguish the fire, assessing the fire area through the ceiling and cutting a very thick section of the roof. And one item for discussion and action is regarding the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment. And as you may recall from past meetings, the Fire Department has purchased a new SUV to serve as a duty officer vehicle. As such, we need to designate our 2008 vehicle surplus. We will be marketing it for sale, either through direct competitive bidding, a vehicle auction site, or a similar process. The following is information on the vehicle that was provided in our packet. It's a 2008 Ford Expedition EL, and the VIN number has been provided for our documentation. Staff recommends that we declare the vehicle surplus by approval of the attached ordinance. So the motion tonight is to approve an ordinance that was provided to us, authorizing the sale of surplus property owned by the Village of La Grange Park.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Launer.
Very straightforward, as the way that we do declare items of, of surplus, and I would support it.
Any other discussion? Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Launer?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. That's all.
And that concludes my report, it's an item for discussion this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Launer. Moving on, Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. For June, Village brush collection continued first full week. Multiple crews spent ninety-eight hours making multiple passes through town, collecting brush piles. Nearly one hundred and seventy-four cubic yards of brush were collected. Forty hours were spent in repairing parkways from water and sewer excavation with fresh topsoil and grass seed. Seventy-five day shift hours were spent on buildings and ground maintenance around the Public Works Facility Village Hall and along Thirty-first Street. Street sweeping continued, spending seventy-two day shift hours cleaning one hundred and forty-nine miles of roadway. Thirty-eight yards of debris were collected, making multiple passes throughout town. Tree maintenance in June, we spent one hundred and forty hours inspecting, planting, trimming, and removing dead or hazardous trees. Thirteen trees were planted this month, as our spring tree planting was pushed back due to extremely wet weather. A Triumph Elm was planted to honor Bruce J. Sirchil at the annual Village Arbor Day Ceremony. There was an amazing turnout of family and friends and village staff present for the dedication. It was truly a wonderful ceremony, with many heartfelt, shared words expressed. Public Works, along with the amazing staff and all departments, worked together to put on the village's first water workshop for residents. It was a great evening with live demonstrations and helpful information about our water distribution and concerning topics. We enjoyed every minute of it, and thank everyone involved for their hard work and superior collaboration. Flags on Thirty-first Street were reinstalled for the upcoming Fourth of July holiday. Staff completed their summer planting at the Village Hall with assortment of flowers, and installed various plants and small shrubs throughout the grounds. Forty day shift hours were spent in June on the maintenance of Public Works equipment and vehicles. Work orders were performed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concerns. Water Department operations, over four hundred and twenty-five day shift hours and thirty-one overtime hours during the month of June were spent on maintenance and repair of sewer and water mains. Twenty-eight million nine hundred and ten thousand gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. One thousand three hundred and forty-four water meters were read in Section Three. Fifty-five monthly accounts and twenty-seven final readings were taken. Various inspection appointments and service calls were performed. Four water and sewer inspections- service calls were performed. Four water and sewer inspections, 16 meter appointments, and 28 service calls were also performed. Fifteen water bacterial samples were taken. Two hundred and thirty utility locations were identified prior to excavations. Eight valve boxes were repaired. Two water service lines were repaired. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
We have an action item?
Yes, sir, coming up. Payment of the light fixture. Purpose is to request authorization for the removal and replacement of a streetlight, which had a hanging light fixture. Staff is seeking approval to pay for an expenditure which included the removal of the broken light, cracked pole, and procurement and installation of the new streetlight on 31st and Robin Hood. The village has already received reimbursement from our insurance company, but per our purchasing regulations, village board approval is needed as the expense is greater than $10,000. The cost for the light pole, light fixture, labor, and equipment to remove and reinstall the light pole totaled $19,737.82. Staff recommends approval of this expenditure at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, make a motion to authorize payment to Lyons Pinner Electric Company for the purchase and installation of a streetlight pole on 31st Street in the amount of $19,737.82.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Trusty Sheehan?
Pretty straightforward, Mr. President.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, Megan, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Sheehan?
Yes.
Trusty Cussera?
Yes.
Trusty Laughtner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Trusty Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
And that concludes Public Works for this month, sir.
Thank you, Trusty Sheehan. Moving on, Finance Committee, Trusty Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Financial update as of June 30. Fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue is at 11% of the annual budget and about $37,000 lower than the prior year. Other local taxes are about $36,000 lower than the prior year due to the timing of cable franchise fee payment last year. Permit revenue was greater in the prior year by approximately $75,000 due to a large permit issued for the Sisters of St. Joseph Project. Intergovernmental revenue is up nearly $100,000 compared to last year due to increased LGDF receipts. The state income tax performed much better than originally projected in April, likely due to the federal tax reform. Charges for services is down about $26,000 due to lower ambulance fee collections in May and June compared to last year. Based on current receivable reports, there should be increased collections in the upcoming months. Fine revenue is approximately $24,000 lower than the prior year. A large court fee receipt was received early last year. Local debt recovery receipts are expected to increase with the implementation of the new ticket software system. And total general fund expenditures are within expectations at 14% of the annual budget and about $132,000 greater than last year. There are no action items. That concludes the finance report.
Thank you, Trusty Messick. Moving on to other reports, our village clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time.
Our village treasurer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village engineer?
No report, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
I have no report, Mr. President.
And Commercial Revitalization Committee, Trusty Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to enjoy reading this. It's great news. But the property manager of the 711 Strip Center has submitted for a permit for the water service line replacement and interior fire sprinkler systems installations. The buildup plans for both Rosati's and ENOS have also been submitted for review. A little side note, if there's an ENOS in Oak Park, it is just tremendous taco Mexican food place, and looking forward to having it in town. It fills a big void for us, and everybody's familiar with Rosati's. Staff is reviewing and finalizing the design of the North Beach Avenue parking lot to be constructed in the right-of-way on the west side of Beach Avenue north of 31st. We need more parking. That's a good thing. And then, on June 28, a ribbon cutting was held for Bang's Beauty Bar located at 1016 East 31st Street, another business that fortunately has chosen LaGrange Park to make their living. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Cussera. Before I move on, I would like to mention that this is our village clerk's first meeting as our village clerk, and what a privilege and pleasure it is to have you, Megan.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve Committee and Collector's reports as presented.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have three items. First item is, I met on Friday with the president of the Park District of LaGrange Park. I also had our Director of Public Works, our Deputy Chief, and also our Assistant Village Manager. And I have to tell you, I was extremely proud of the way the meeting went and the way we conducted ourselves, because it was a situation that was brought forward to me by a resident about a situation that happened in one of our parks. And I'll tell you, we are awful proud, and should be awful proud of the staff that we have, the way that they represent us on a daily basis. I couldn't be prouder. Thank you, guys. We're going to have recreational marijuana coming forward, January 1. Our village needs to look at this very closely, so I've asked Julia to place it on our work session agenda for August. So, everyone, if they need any other information, please contact Julia or staff and get what we need to discuss that important topic. Last thing I have is probably the most important thing of the night, and that's the proclamation for National Night Out. And where'd Sergeant go? He left. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide drug and violence prevention program on August 7, 2019, entitled National Night Out. Whereas, the 36th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the Village of LaGrange Park to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. Whereas, the Village of LaGrange Park's Police Department plays a vital role in assisting Cook County Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies through joint crime, drug and violence prevention efforts in the Village of LaGrange Park, and in supporting National Night Out 2019 locally. Whereas, it is essential that all citizens of the Village of LaGrange Park be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the Village of LaGrange Park. Whereas, police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out program. Therefore, be proclaimed Tuesday, August 6, 2019, recognized as National Night Out in the Village of LaGrange Park. And again, kudos to Chief, your department, and Sergeant Fellers in particular for the amount of work that has been put into this. And it is a great event, so thank you for all that they do. Public participation of non-agenda-related items. Would anyone care to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.